All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, we will move on to old business, tax abatement 2018-13. Mr. Cooley and Mr. Whitaker are here this evening for any questions that you may have.
Just to reiterate to the council, there are three proposed resolutions in front of you. Resolution 2021-12 would find that Mr. Whitaker is in substantial compliance with the property tax abatement in the statutes and allow him to forward with the abatement. Resolution 2021-13 would determine that he is not in substantial compliance, but that it is through no fault of his own and/or reasonable efforts have been made towards compliance and that you are allowing the abatement despite the lack of compliance. And Resolution 2022-14 would be that he is not in compliance and it is not through a fault outside of his control or that there has not been reasonable efforts and that you are terminating completely the abatement. What I would note, just kind of as a point of parliamentary procedure so that everyone is on the same page, is you do have all three of these pending in your, you know, proposed resolutions. So what I would suggest is that any motion or anything that is brought before a body utilizing parliamentary procedure that does not obtain a vote or is a motion or a second is considered to have been defeated or done. So I would suggest that if you have one that you want to go with or one that you don't want to go with, that you proceed accordingly with parliamentary procedure. Does anybody have any questions for me with regard to any of the things that I just said?
Any further discussion?
No, I think the only point I wanted to make was that it's still your recommendation that we don't pass or we pass ordinance 2021-14 based on your interpretation of Indiana code, correct?
Yes, based on my interpretation of Indiana code, I do not believe he is in compliance. And beyond that, I don't think he can be in compliance based on the nature of what's in the building.
Correct. So I guess, and I think that that's where we're at. It's not that we don't want to help, Jeff. We, I think it's that we don't feel this is going, we feel this is going to violate Indiana code, which in our office, we swore that we would abide by the, you know, Indiana code and Indian law and we would uphold that in our office code. But I think in this case, because there wasn't any kind of a precedent setting case, you would have the ability to take it to an appellate court and get a judgment at that point. And if they agreed with your interpretation of Indiana code, then that would open that back up to allow us to look at that abatement then. So at this point in time, I think it's our impression, or at least my impression, that we can't pass this based on Indiana code. So I'd make the motion that we pass ordinance 2021-14.
Before you go to vote, is there, I mean, we tabled this last meeting because we had one council member not here. We've got two that aren't here at this meeting. I don't think we can issue an objection based on the fact that we don't have a full council, but it seems that in keeping with what we've done previously, it might make sense to table us until January again where you'll have a full council to vote. But that's your point for the record.
Do you think that you can ask if there's anyone that wants to table it?
I don't feel like we need to table it based on just discussions amongst the council. I think the vote's going to be the same whether we table it, wait for another month, or we vote tonight, I think. But I don't speak for everybody, that's just my opinion.
No, I think we've carried it long enough and we need to do something.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. It's my opinion, we've heard from two attorneys here who both have different opinions of this law ordinance. I've also taken it upon myself to ask some other attorneys, Ford to be exact, and they all seem to read the law the same way that the city attorney does. And with what Jamie said, in that we've taken an oath to uphold the laws of the state of Indiana. And the, I just think this comes down to a decision that this council should not have to make. I think this has to go, if, Jeff, if you would want to take it to an appellate court, I think the person or persons to make this decision really needs to be a judge or an appellate judge, or not appellate, I can't think of the word, arbitration. But I just don't feel like in good conscience that I can ignore what the state ordinance says. So that's why, and Jeff, you know, I appreciate everything that you've done for this city and the development, but my vote tonight is going to be to withdraw the abatement.
I'd like to read something before we make the vote.
Well, Jeff, we've, unless the council would like for a public comment or a comment.
I think it's fair. I think it's fair.
Please come forward and...
I will. So this is your new tax phase in rules, guidelines, right, that you guys approved?
Yes, sir.
Did you approve this?
Yeah, we approved those.
The council, everybody approved it?
The voting members of the council approved it.
Under the section that says the revocation of tax abatement by common counsel. Item number two, about halfway down. This document that you guys approved says, "In the case that the failure to abide by the incentive agreement with the city was due to factors beyond the recipient's control, a request for leniency can be made in a waiver of noncompliance granted according to the determination of the common counsel." Did you guys sign that? Did you write that?
I believe that you made that request, but it doesn't comply with Indiana code, so we didn't grant the leniency in that case. I think we want to help you, Jeff.
It says, it says that you have the ability to grant it under a noncompliance.
That your abatement didn't meet the compliance of what you agreed to in the abatement, which we, so we...
It says, "In the case that the failure to abide by the incentive agreement with the city was due to factors beyond the recipient's control." Does anybody dispute that I didn't cause COVID-19 and I didn't have anything to do with that? Couldn't get anybody to sign the lease? Does anybody disagree with that?
We're not disagreeing with you there.
Okay.
Well, now wait, we're going to start creating a record that I don't, that I think's going to be intensely difficult to follow if you decide to move this forward. You asked for a comment, we're making comment. I'm allowing you to make whatever comment you made. I've allowed for the questions thus far, but we're not going to continue down this road of a discussion back and forth, correct, Michael?
Right, and we don't want to do that. And I'm going to say just one thing because it follows on what Chris said when he was explaining the resolutions to you. The resolution that Chris drafted that approved the abatement for this year was a finding that the building is not currently compliant with Indiana code, but that due to circumstances beyond the control of Jeff and his best efforts to the contrary, you were going to grant the waiver of noncompliance for this year. That is your council's positive result, would give you a one-year extension on this abatement because you would find that he is not in compliance, the building is not in compliance, but is due to circumstances beyond its control. So that's the way these are drafted. So you have one that I drafted that leaves this for 10 years and says we're in compliance, which you've expressed that you don't agree with. That's fine, and I'm not, I'm not trying to trample on the record here, I'm just trying to say, that's the one I drafted. You have two that your council drafted. One says, this is not due to circumstances to be under control, withdrawing the abatement. And one says that due to circumstances to be under control, we're going to continue the abatement for another year. Is that a fair way to say it?
That is absolutely, that is absolutely correct. That is what those three say and the two that I drafted. And I will, and I will stand behind the legality of either of the ones that I drafted. I maintain my position that legally, I don't think that you can put this type of building into a building that is receiving a real property tax abatement. The same way that I don't think he could put a country club in there, and I don't think he could put an automobile dealership there, I don't think he could put a golf course in there. I don't think you can put that in there. However, I agree that the statute does, does provide for the ability to stay, which is consistent with what Mr. Whitaker is stating, that the opportunity for lenience, if that's the word you want to utilize, which is in the document that he read, or if you wanted to determine that it is not through lack of effort or otherwise things that are within the control of Jeff Whitaker. I do believe that my legal analysis maintains the same, which is if that's the one you pick, then you have to revisit this every year because you're giving him an abatement for this year. So I don't know how many years down the road you get to say, okay, yes, in 2019 COVID existed. Now we're, because we're only, what, three years into a 10-year, 10-year abatement? So I don't know how many years you get to continue down that path. But it is certainly, that is certainly an opportunity that you have. So Mr. Cooley is correct that those are the three options that are available to you as these resolutions are drafted right now. And I would indicate that I do believe you need to take some action. I mean, if it's, if it's table it, if it's table it, if it's vote on one of these resolutions, vote on one of these resolutions. But we can't just keep, there's only so many times you can kick the can down the road because ultimately it affects his ability to, if he so chooses, go to the circuit court and ask the circuit court to determine whether or not you were right or he was right or, you know, what the legal, the court's legal opinion on the matter is. But I do believe that Mr. Cooley has accurately stated the three resolutions.
I believe if we pass 2021-14, it kind of forces that judgment that Darryl mentioned out of our hands and we get a legal interpretation, and then we can move forward with a legal interpretation.
And it's not that I'm trying to kick the can down the road either. It's, it's just that I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge, I don't have a law degree. And looking at that ordinance and asking other attorneys, it just seems to me that we cannot make that decision.
There is a motion on the floor made by Jamie.
I'll protect it.
Motion's been made, seconded by Rick. Amy, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Jamie Kane?
Yes.
Or Kenneth Waller?
Yes.
Darrell Poling?
Yes.
Read zero. Thank you, Mr. Cooley. Up next, we have Donna Lecker, Utilities Manager with ordinance 20...
Oh, sorry. Before Donna starts, can I simply ask that the record reflect, or could I ask you to please call resolutions 12 and 13 and see if there's any action on any of those?
I would call for a motion on 2021-12 to move to the floor. Hearing none, that motion and resolution will die. 2021-...
Do you need to make a motion to not pass it or just take no action?
I think take no action is sufficient.
Okay. And 2021-13, take a motion to call to the floor. Hearing and seeing none, that motion will also die. Now we will move to Donna Lecker, Utilities Manager, 2021-23 for water rates. Good evening, Donna.
Good evening. Before you, the request to pass 2021-23 water rate ordinance on second reading.
Brooke again for Reading Financial is here to answer questions you may have regarding the rate study and the rate proposal. Any questions for Donna or Brooke?
I think the motion we pass 2021-23 on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's made by Jamie, seconded by Darrell. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And 2021-24 is the sewer rate, again.
Motion we pass 2021-24 on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Rick on 2021-24. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Brooke, appreciate it. Up next, we have Chief Stermer. We opened bids for some surplus equipment, which, Chief, I'll let you sort of talk about that a moment and talk about why it's on here too. We opened the bids in the Board of Works per standard procedure.
So we had a vote a couple of months ago to go ahead and, once the budget was passed for next fiscal year, we had talked about approving $1.2 million for a new aerial device or aerial apparatus. We just weren't sure how we were going to pay for it yet. There is cash on hand, but we weren't sure how we were going to split that funding up. So we went ahead and opened up sealed bids for surplus equipment, which is a 92 Grumman aerial cat, 102-foot aerial platform. It's 30 years old. We opened those bids tonight. We did receive a bid for $25,010, which that truck was around $25,000 to $35,000 is what I found doing comparative bidding or comparative pricing for that apparatus. So it falls definitely well within that timeframe. With that though, we wanted to bring it to this board, the mayor and I, to discuss, do we accept that bid knowing that we are going to move forward in purchasing a new aerial? And how are we going to purchase that new aerial? Or do we hold off on that bid and not get rid of our second aerial? We do have, that is our, that aerial did not make any runs last year. It is pretty much a reserve apparatus that's kept in frontline status to use for emergency use only. We do have a 75-foot straight ladder that we do have and currently have and will contain to have until delivery of this new apparatus. If we chose to go down that road, then we would try to sell that to recruit some more funding. I have provided a cost estimate breakdown or really a kind of a way to pay for this. I currently have not even started the bid process on our apparatus yet. This is talking to dealers and my knowledge of the fire service about that, where that 1.2 number comes from. We have, we have looked at two demo apparatus, one that ends up at 1.1 and one that ends up at 1.3. So I am confident that working backwards, having an end, having a, having a do not exceed this amount of money makes the truck purchase a little bit easier to make because we can make sure that we're sticking within that amount of money. However, with the cost of inflation in prices, this 1.2 is only going to be good for about this year. And then we are going to have to look at allotting more money for that just because of inflation, cost of steel and purchasing and things like that. So it is somewhat on a timeline only because the instability of our markets dictates some of that.
And you mentioned earlier, they're expecting a year-long delivery window.
Correct. So they're at 300 and they told, I asked one manufacturer how long and they said they're, they're at 392 days. I would say that a good estimate would be anywhere from a 12 to 16-month delivery timeframe. That is from, that is from the time of ordering. So we will not take delivery of this truck. It could be maybe close to two years from when we're speaking now.
But again, the request to tonight is...
The request tonight is to go ahead and to approve, my, my goal would be to approve the sale of that fire truck to allow somebody else to use it who wants it. And then to move to agreeing with or laying out a funding plan or a funding idea for the next apparatus so we can begin that process.
So the green light to send out a request for prices?
Yes, and, and start working that, start working that way towards it's approved and we don't know how, if or how we're going to pay for it. Knowing that we're going to pay for it will solidify my decision into, all right, let's, let's sit down and get, start putting pen to paper versus just looking window shopping that we're currently doing.
Are there questions for the chief?
Have you put any money in the latter?
Into ladder 11, not for one year. So when we decided...
I think it's looking at getting rid of...
Right, well, we were looking at getting rid of it, but we went ahead and stopped putting money into that. Only, now, we did produce estimates of upwards of $80,000 to replace everything. But once that, that leaking cylinder did fail the NFPA aerial test, and insurance said it's not bad enough to take out of service, but our guys weren't comfortable with that, we went ahead and stopped putting any money into it at that point. Because once we started, I didn't know where we were going to stop at and we're going to have more money into it than what the truck's actually worth.
And then the estimated department knows all the problems.
Yes. Yeah, and they're, they're happy to overlook those and take delivery.
As long as you get that in writing, I'll make a motion that we get rid of.
Okay. I think all of our equipment sales, as is clause historically, so that's no big deal. Motion's been made to accept the bid of $25,000 and $10.
$10, right.
It also came with the recommendation to sell it based on the Board of Works. So I guess they're the ones that technically sell it. But is this council okay with that? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Second item, does the proposal from the chief following the projected budgetary expenditures for a new apparatus seem sufficient enough to allow him to continue solicitation of quotes? Darrell?
I would say I would ask for a, I would ask for a motion for a vote of confidence in the, in the chief proceeding as he is allowing.
I'll second.
Yeah, okay, so I need a, so we need a second for the motion to approve. Rick made the first, who seconds that?
Second then.
Jamie, Jamie makes the second. Everybody already voted because he said, does everyone agree? Then we need, then we have a motion for a vote of confidence in the chief's proposed plan that was made by Darrell and seconded by Jamie that is now to move.
All those in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. Thanks, Chief. Up next, Ron May, City Engineer, 2021-26, some stop sign changes that were coming out of the traffic committee as requested by Councilman Fleetwood at the last meeting. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening. Good evening to all of you. So we had a request specifically for the intersection of Fourth Street with East Street, which is an all-way stop, a four-way stop to remove the stop control off of Fourth Street, leaving East Street to stop at that intersection. In the process of looking, when the traffic committee met and looking at that intersection, we also further discussed intersections of Barbara Boulevard with Richard Street slash Lisa Lane, intersection of Greenview Drive with Macy Lane, the intersection of Veterans Way with Moscow Road, and the intersection of Washington Street with Anderson Street and also Washington Street with Menford Street. And the committee unanimously recommends to you that those six intersections be converted from four-way stops to two-way stops. In the case of Barbara Boulevard, Barbara would be the through street and Richard Street slash Lisa Lane would stop. Greenview Drive, Macy Lane would be the stop street and Greenview Drive would be the through street. Veterans Way would be the through street with Moscow Road stopping for Veterans Way. And that one in particular is different because of the recent opening of Veterans Way and the continued growth of traffic using Veterans Way now, all the way from 3 to Michigan Avenue. And finally, the intersection of Washington Street with Anderson, where Washington Street would be the through street and Anderson Street would stop. And the intersection here on the corner of our property of Washington Street with Menford Street where Menford Street would stop.
Not an issue with what we're proposing, just a question, can we put signs on the stop sign poles below where they have to stop detailing that cross traffic does not stop?
Actually, with the last changes, which was the intersection of Ireland and Fourth Street, we did that. And also when Veterans Way opened all the way through at Smith Road, did we add cross traffic does not stop warning sign? Yes.
Maybe we don't have to leave it there for six months or something, but...
It's a, it is a fact that drivers operate out of habit. And we do, we all do when we drive and we get used to a... Interesting you should ask that question. I had a lady call or email about Fourth Street in Ireland and she asked why we didn't advise people that the cross street didn't stop. But in fact, we had already done that. And she didn't even observe that we had added that warning sign. But yes, that's our plan is to place advisory or warning signs on the stop street, attempting to inform motorists that the cross traffic would not stop.
We still have a few issues, but at least we're, we're making an effort to...
There is a learning period involved, without a doubt.
Be interested to know, was there any hesitation on the Moscow Road Veterans Way change?
On the traffic committee's part?
Yeah, and the reason I ask is that leaves no stop. I mean, you get on Burger King and you go all the way down to the Roundabout. And I understand that's part of the reason for that, whatever, the go-around there. But that does concern me.
We may need to ask the police department to do some educational enforcement to help to remind people, but my recommendation would be that we first see what happens.
And I'm not saying that I'm against it, I'm just saying it is a concern that we're going to open up, that's a long straightaway, we're going to open up to 50 and 55, maybe 60 mile an hour through there. But I'll tell my brother to slow down.
That is always a thought in this process and we do have ways we can address that if it becomes. I mentioned Smith Road, Smith Road used to be the end of Veterans Way, correct? We found that when we first opened Veterans Way, people had formed the habit of not stopping there because there was a left turn if you were going north or a right turn if you were going east, and that's all there was, right? Only one day, it wasn't just that. There was through traffic on Veterans Way. So it's a matter of people adjusting to the changes.
I'll make a motion to accept the committee's recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Rick. All those have been, or Darrell, yep. Motion made by Darrell, seconded by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Would we like to suspend the rules on that or do you want to carry it to next month?
Can we, since there's a fine involved?
The ordinance doesn't create the fine though.
Oh, it doesn't?
State statute creates the fine. The ordinance simply designates the stop control. But you're the legal...
I would like to see it go a month and see if we get any feedback.
I would feel more comfortable if you want to move it.
Ordinance 2021-27 is traffic signal change.
So in the process of drafting the ordinance for the stop signs and in reviewing our code of ordinances, it came to light something I actually already knew that had disregarded for a period of time, that our ordinance in the schedule of stop control, all-way stop control intersections with automatic traffic signal included the intersection of Montgomery Road with Lincoln Street. Now circa 2009, the Board of Works passed a resolution to temporarily remove that signal during the construction of Lincoln Street. And that resolution said at the conclusion of the construction work, the signal would go back. During construction, the intersection of Floral Court on the west side opposite Montgomery Road was reconfigured to make it a four-legged approach. And it was decided that the traffic signal wasn't necessary, so it never got put back. That was 12, 14 years ago. It is still in our ordinance, so this is really intended as housekeeping, if you will, to simply remove that signal from the code of ordinances.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-27 on first reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Darrell. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay.
Within the rules?
That would, that would count, okay. A motion has been made to suspend the rules on 2021-27 by Darryl. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Is there a second reading of 2021-27, motion to approve?
Second. Correct.
Motion's been made by Jamie.
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Clerk Treasurer, Amy Barnes, PTO Transfer Policy for Transition Year 2022. I believe you have a copy of this. This is something we've been working on, Amy. Do you want to sort of talk about how we arrived here?
So when we passed the handbook, we had, Julie Navi and I had already scheduled meetings so that we could discuss the changes with each of the departments. Those went very well. I think they cleared up a lot of miscommunication and maybe some misinterpretation of some of the things in the handbook. But two things did come out of those meetings. The first of those being that this next year, 2022, is a transition year, was figuring out when, because we're going to anniversary dates, as far as the higher dates, anniversary dates, when we are rolling over PTO into their personal sick bank. We felt like it was not going to be fair, for lack of better terminology, to the people who especially have more years, 15 to 20-plus years. Because if they had an anniversary date in February, they were going to very quickly lose at, at least a week of their vacation time, their PTO time, without really having any time to take that time off. So we have decided for the interim year to enact this policy until October 1st, giving them, for 2022, giving them a little bit more time to use that PTO time before we roll it over into their personal sick bank. Then with the understanding that third quarter, we're going to use their anniversary date and then obviously January 1st, 2023, we're using anniversary dates from then on. It's just a little bit of a, and we thought it, it's not necessarily a change to the handbook, it's just an interim policy to get us through this next year.
This was something that came out of our employee trainings for the handbook.
Yeah, out of the meetings.
If you remember, Lynetta asked about that last month as well. We had mandatory meetings for everyone. This was something that came up as, hey, what about this? So there are actually two items that we gleaned from that.
Need to approve this or just let it go?
Amy?
Yeah, we decided that we felt like it needed to be approved and signed.
But it's not an ordinance and it's not a resolution.
It's a resolution.
It's really more of another vote of confidence to what they're doing.
I'll make a motion that we approve the delay of PTO transfer for transition, for the transition year policy.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Rick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. Up next.
Second thing that came out of that meeting is just a clarification on some wording. So with the, the addendums at the end of the handbook, there's a city one, there is a fire, and there's a police. And in both the fire and the police, it was very specific on the amount of hours that they would be guaranteed for call-out time and for their overtime pay. For the city, it was not clear. And I, and there was an expressed interest of, we don't want to be called out in the middle of the night for 15 minutes of work and only pay, that kind of thing. So we wanted to make sure that it was clear within the handbook, the wording of what that should say. I believe you have a copy of the ordinance, you should. So in bold there is what specifically it says and it guarantees, a minimum of one hour shall be paid out for each call-out occurrence at time and a half. Previously, it didn't have anything. It just said that they will get paid time and a half, but there wasn't a, a minimum guarantee.
Did we follow any kind of, I know it maybe didn't say anything, but did we follow any rule previously? Is this consistent with what we were doing?
Yes, so this is basically what we were doing and that's what we wanted with this handbook, was that we were putting into writing, matching that with what we were doing. This is also something like for the State Board of Accounts, if they come to audit, they're going to want to know this information. So now we have it in writing. Yeah.
I'll make a motion we pass 21, or 2021-28. Is it on the first reading, I guess?
Yes, and I will ask you to suspend the rules here in a minute on that too. But, yeah, motion's been made by Jamie.
Second.
Second by Darryl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Would entertain a motion to suspend the rules on 2021-28. Motion's made by Jamie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Entertain a motion for second reading of 21-28. Motion for approval, motion's been made by Jamie.
Second.
Second by Darryl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. Third item, list of encumbrances.
So these are the encumbrances that are needed and they're, if you want more information, I just, I just didn't want to give you a bunch of papers in front of you, but I do have the contracts or the invoices that go along with these. This is just basically a list so that we can put it into the minutes to reflect it on the record as to what we are encumbering for the next year.
Very, Mark, you may want to mention, talk about this real quick, about how CCMG, you want to talk about that a little bit? So the, the big ones here for MVH all the way down through CCIF are for our 2021-2 CCMG.
Yes, the state was very late in getting out who they awarded funding to and the amount of funding. We received, we have projects totaling, we don't know, we got about the bids on the 15th, but we got an estimate number. We received approximately $475,000, which we have to match with an equal share, plus we have some non-participatory items. So because of that amount of money, we don't have it readily available in next year's budget, so we chose to encumber funds from this year's budget and have them already in place when we go ahead and accept the bids on the 15th and December.
Which we typically, this is money budgeted for CCMG.
This is money that's budgeted for road improvements for CCMG match. The problem is, we were going to lose it all, which meant we would have to use next year's budgeted money that we plan on using for CCMG in 2022. And because they do it twice annually, there's no guarantee when we will get funding. We was hoping to get some funded early in this year and we didn't hardly get anything funded. Next year, they could turn around and say, oh, we're going to give it to you in the early March, April period. And if we use the money we have available in next year's budget, we wouldn't have anything to match, therefore we'd have to reneg on the funding issue.
We're going through the additional appropriation, because all this money is going to go back into these funds, but they were very, very late in getting us the award this year.
They backed it up almost 30 days. And that's why we're having a special meeting on the 15th so that we can get everything in place.
I'll make a motion that we approve the list of encumbrances labeled carryovers from 2021 to 2022.
Motion's been made by Jamie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, and the, the agenda item that we added was transfer of funds, Mark?
Yeah, we had a couple late bills that were overlooked after the encumbrances were all put together. If you remember, we had a drainage issue on the east side of town. It was a substantial project, at least to get us into next year. We made some temporary repairs. That bill showed up along with one or two other bills that came in at the last minute. So what I have proposed is to move that money that's available, leftover in these four appropriations, down into the 339th so I can pay those bills and keep those vendors happy for the services they provided.
This is money already existing in your 100 level?
Yes.
And you want to move it to 300 level?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to transfer the funds.
Second.
Motion's been made by Darryl, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The only thing I have this evening is our next council meeting will be January 11th at 6:30 PM. That is our new day and time, so please note that. And Jamie, would you like to give an update from the Board of Works?
Josh Tressler came and we approved the IT, an updated memorandum, memorandums of understanding for IT and communication. Fire chief came and we approved the conditional offer of employment for candidate number four and the bid on the fire truck that East Coast has about tonight as well. Zeke Smith came from the wastewater department and we approved a UV disinspection task order agreement with Strand for $20,000 and a four-inch portable diesel lift station trash pump for $32,000. Mark Kloster came, Mark Kloster camber came with bid openings for the replacement of the pickup truck and we approved that for a Chevy truck at $33,892. And Mayor Morris came to talk to us about the, hopefully the last change order for the building, change order 15, which we approved. We approved the purchase of some office furniture for the GIS. There's a special Board of Works meeting coming up on the 15th. I think that's really it.
Anything else for the council? If not, I wish everybody a happy, safe and healthy Merry Christmas and we'll see you in the new year.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you, everybody.